Okay, I'm going to call this meeting to order. If you'll please rise. I've asked Supervisor Gould to lead us in prayer and Supervisor Bishop to lead us in the pledge.
You'll please join me in prayer. Lord, we thank you and praise you today for this day that you've given us, Lord, and for this great nation that we live in. We thank you for the responsibility of running Mojave County that you placed on our shoulders, Lord. Help us to choose wisely. Watch over our employees as they're out doing their day-to-day routine, Lord. Keep them safe. Many have dangerous jobs. Please bring them home injury-free to the loving arms of their family this evening. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I need a motion to call for an executive session to be held on November 18th, 2019 at 9:00 a.m. for discussion and consultation with legal counsel. Does it move?
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion and action to approve waiving the reading in full of items presented for discussion, adoption, or approval at this meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Official business to come before this board. Discussion of pending or contemplated litigation claims and demands. Mr. Edmondson?
Nothing to report to the board, thank you.
Okay. And committee and/or legislative reports. We did have a big county summit last week, so I'll start with Supervisor Watson.
Thank you, Chairman Angus. At the CSA summit last week, the Arizona County Supervisors Association approved the Mojave County resolution to protect the 164,000 acre feet of fourth priority water resources to remain on the Colorado River Water Training System. The vote by the entirety of the association was 37 in favor, 16 opposed. Thank you.
Supervisor Bishop?
Thank you. I as well attended the 15th Annual CSA Legislative Summit this past week with you Supervisor Angus and Supervisor Watson. We had a fantastic forum with our colleagues across the state and we exchanged ideas and planned for this next year's legislative session. Also adopted budget priorities and 15 legislative proposals were discussed, nine of which were adopted. There were several resolutions supported by a majority vote to include opposing the permanent transfer of any fourth priority Colorado River rights that Supervisor Watson discussed or just brought up. Another one was expressing concern with the pension debt repayment plan and urging the state government to restore barriers to responsible solutions. And then we supported urging state leaders to take action to increase state and local investment in the transportation infrastructure. And then we supported expressing our concern with the rapidly rising cost of the Arizona long-term care system. The former Arizona Governor Bruce Babbitt was a speaker and he shared his concern with groundwater issues to include Mojave County and suggested that the legislation needs to give counties more water management tools by creating a regulatory framework that could be used to better plan for the long-term stewardship of water resources. So we appreciated the former Secretary of State, former government speaking up for Mojave County. And just wanted to also note that my term ends as the medium county caucus chairman and Yavapai County Supervisor Randy Garrison was nominated as my replacement. And then the vice chair will remain, Coconino Supervisor Matt Ryan, and this will be voted on in November, the next meeting. And then I was nominated as the first vice president of the CSA Executive Board and that election also was next month in Phoenix.
Very good. That concludes my report. Thank you. Supervisor Gould?
None today, Madam Chairman.
Okay. And Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll submit a report on the Lower Colorado River Multi-Species written by Bill Lamb to the clerk. For anybody that cares about us, the only concern there is with until they get a continuing resolution, there's going to be none of the money in the kitty to continue the work they had. We also had a Mojave Population Desert Tortoise Management Oversight Group meeting that was held in Vegas. The meeting was a regular session of the MOG, held on an in-person basis every six months. It is led by Fish and Wildlife Service with support and input from the Desert Tortoise Recovery Office. About 60 executives and staff persons from Mojave Wildlife Land Management Agencies were in attendance. Quad State is a full member. The stated purpose of the fall meeting is to review funding and recovery process or progress. While this meeting did not address these topics at depth, the Fish and Wildlife Service did circulate a summary of projects from the Recovery Implementation Teams, or RITS, with an expression that many of the recovery units that show the greatest decline in tortoise populations and densities, the fewest recovery projects are proposed. The table did add a significant data line showing the current monitoring status of the populations in the conservation areas. Range-wide seeding increases for restoration identified for Southern Nevada. California range-wide Raven Watch emphasized on education, removal of free-roaming burrows, grazing in excess of authorized population levels. Ivan Paw Critical Habitat Unit, they're down 7.4% in population. They're only going to do Raven surveys and law enforcement is proposed. Fenner Unit is down 7.3%. Habitat Restoration is proposed together with fencing on the I-40 and US-95. Death Valley, it had no status listing and they're just going to be doing warning signing on the highway. Fremont Craver, 6.8% down. Raven Food Supply Study, Habitat Restoration, develop a program to reduce the Sahara Mustard. Superior is down 9.3% in population, fencing of Interstate 15, Barstow and through the basin. The Ord Rodman is down 8.2%, fencing of Interstate 40. Chimwavi is down 10.8%, fencing of Interstate 40. Chukawala is down 4.1%. Raven surveys, fencing Interstate 10, shavers through Chukawala Valley. Joshua Tree is up, 6.2, there's no proposals there. Pinto Mountain is 8.3% down, no proposals. Northeast Mojave RIT, Southwest Nevada Work Group, fencing in Culverts on Highway 160 and fencing on US-95 in Clark County. Northeast Mojave RIT, Southeast Nevada Work Group, fencing Highway 159 in Red Rock. Continue Road Warrior Inventory on Road Kills. Coyote Springs is up 10.2% over the year, fencing US-93, that's in Lincoln County. Mormon Mesa is up 8.2% for the year, no proposals. The Beaver Dam Slope is up 22.2%, which is kind of enlightening there, but no proposals are there. Beaver Dam Slope is up the same amount. Looking at travel management planning, Gold Butte up 14.4%, fencing Interstate 15 through the Virgin River Canyon. Lake Mead, we had no report. Paiute El Dorado is up 4.4%, no proposals. Eastern Mojave, that's Arizona and Utah, work group is working on that. Beaver Dam Slope, 22.2%, install fuel breaks in the Beaver Dam Slope. The Virgin Slope is up 14.4%, no proposals. Grand Canyon Perishant is 14.4% up and then fuel breaks also. Lake Mead had no report. Other areas, they're fine, fuel reduction and native annual species diversity in burned tortoise habitat. The Upper Virgin River is down 3.2%. Land acquisition in Red Cliffs Reserve, education center at Red Hills, Guardian Complex, tortoise fencing on the reserve. Initiate a gene flow study among populations in Washington County. Measure the tortoise recovery and population viability, study efficiency of herbicide and espalier to control the exotic grasses and measure effect on native perennials, habitat restoration in the burned areas identified tortoise habitat quarter, and then the fencing of Highway 7 south of St. George. Agency reports were kickoff of the meeting were pretty brief. Of significance, however, was the report from the Department of Defense. The representative have echoed much of what we've heard recently on the Western Region Partnership. Department of Defense is fully committed to expanding funds for the recovery of key-listed species. Leadership is fully engaged for two years. Most of the other agency reports involve continuing inventory and monitoring. Egg oiling for Raven population control has gained traction, but application is limited to where there is motorized vehicle access. Most of the land management agencies are actively engaging in habitat restoration, but the primary focus is closed routes of travel, implementing travel management plans. The activity tracking tool finally will be coming online soon. They struggled to get this operational ever since the University of Redlands dropped the program. The intent is to track and document the implementation of the projects, whether of RIT origin or done with other funding such as mitigation deposits. They'll actively engage in trying to pick up the totality of the on-ground implementation that has occurred since the revised recovery plan of 2011. There was concern and good discussion regarding having the BLM Regional NEPA Support Team out of Nevada undertake problematic NEPA analysis on fencing highways. Fish and Wildlife presented four options. The first was a total of 2,888 miles of roads in the four states with prioritization. Option two was to cite specific analysis of 14 identified high priority highways, 324 miles. Three was 1,848 miles of roads in California and Nevada. Option four was essentially the no-action alternative with detailed analysis on project-by-project basis. After good discussion, the Utah and Arizona representatives made the case these states should not be excluded. And option three, as amended, was adopted by the consensus, which would include all states. There was discussion of the self-life of the problematic fish and wildlife estimates, 10 to 20 years. Nevada Department of Transportation raised issues on locations and desires fence locations be outside the boundaries of the right-of-way grant since it cannot allow third-party maintenance or other activities in any project within the right-of-way. At closing, we raised the issue of funding and commitment and received a commitment that the NEPA analysis would not include any commitment for fund construction or maintenance from the counties. That's all, Madam Chairman.
Thank you very much. I don't have a report, but I was going to yield some of my time to Susan McAlpine, but I don't see her. Is she here, Susan? Susan is the newest member of the Wild Horse and Burrow, the National Wild Horse and Burrow Advisory Commission, and they had a meeting last week and she was anxious to tell us what happened. So maybe if she comes in a little later, we can find time for her. But at this time, I see that our congressman is walking in. I'm going to move some items around. I'm going to now hear item 52. And item 52 reads, "Discussion and Possible Action: Determination of the Board's Position on Becoming a Second Amendment Sanctuary County. Discussion of a Draft Resolution if Necessary and to Provide Direction to Staff." Now, I have a byway. I have a little introduction. I want to welcome our Congressman Paul Gosar, who will be speaking on this issue. Back at our August 5th meeting, this board voted unanimously to adopt Resolution Number 2019-086, supporting the city of Needles, California, in declaring Needles a Second Amendment Sanctuary City. The establishment of a sanctuary cities and counties is a movement that we are seeing local jurisdictions implement countrywide, the majority which are intent on protecting the rights granted by the United States Constitution, specifically the Second Amendment. So why Mojave County? Anyone who's been paying attention to what's going on around us sees there is traction to implement gun control laws, even here in Arizona. When I put this on the agenda, some people laughed, asked me why we would need this since we already have, we have all our gun rights. Well, things are happening at warp speed in this country and it happens incrementally and then one day you look around and you say, what happened to my country? What happened to my rights? I refuse to let that happen here in Mojave County without a fight. I was reading the news one day. I came across this story. The feds demand Apple and Google hand over names of 10,000-plus users of an app which people download to calibrate their rifle scopes. And that was my aha moment, that there is no place safe from the ongoing frantic movement to curtail our constitutional right to bear arms. Many people in this community have approached me and probably others on this board about this issue. I decided to put this out there for discussion for the entire board and decide if this is the direction we want to go. To me, it's a statement from Mojave County that if Congress or state legislature or the governor passes laws which infringe on our Second Amendment rights with the help and leadership of our county sheriff, they're in for a big fight. I hope other Arizona counties would follow suit. We will hear from our sheriff in a few minutes, along with our state Senator Sonny Borelli and Representative Leo Biassucci and many others who have come a long way and signed up to speak, including Needles Mayor Jeff Williams, Councilman Tim Terrell, and a member of the National Board of Directors for the NRA who happens to be a citizen of Mojave County. So with that, I want to welcome Paul Gosar.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. And thanks for your work. I look forward to having you come and speak. Big go-down. NATO O'Rourke, Francis O'Rourke, maybe out of presidential race. But that doesn't mean that any of the rest of the candidates running for president want any less of an intention of taking away your Second Amendment. We've seen that we've gone down this road. We saw what happened with the Fix Nix passage, where they separated off the National Rust Prosecutor Concealing Carrier. America has to wake up. Because what are we for? Our First and Second Amendments are tied together intrinsically because of that.
We don't have the Second Amendment, we don't have the First. And we see this fast encroachment of the federal government. They're the ones that know all and will be all. And so this is a rare opportunity to see what you're for instead of what you're against. We see the destination over in California and throughout the country on immigration issues in which cities are violating, you know, the right of enforcement of law. So this is about also the strength of empowerment, not victimization. Imagine about the 800 to 2.4 million incidences across every year in which a crime was thwarted because a citizen had the personal protection of a Second Amendment. I mean, just last week, we saw Fletcher Cox, and maybe the week before, Philadelphia Eagles' defensive lineman, actually thwarted an old boyfriend, his girlfriend, throwing rocks and being very criminalized in his application to this girl. The Second Amendment is there for tyranny against a government that's overbearing. Okay. I applaud you for making this commencement. The discussion is about empowerment, not about victimization. You know, we have a wonderful sheriffs and police force, but they can't be everywhere all the time. And if you want anything to look at, look at what's transpiring now in California. The all-out wanton for, against the law. That's not right. Thank you for standing up for the American citizens. Thanks for standing up for the Second Amendment. And by standing up for the Second Amendment, you're also standing up for the First. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Congressman. Wait, stay here. When I was in Washington last, a couple of months ago, we met and I told you I was thinking about that, this, and you got all excited. You thought it was a good idea because we're hardly the first where there are many, many other counties who've already done this and it is a statement of fight, you know, and using the language that, let's just say, the other side uses. So in Washington, what's the feel there? I mean, do you see them, you know, trying to put together laws in different ways to get at our guns?
They already have and they've gone further. I brought up the Fix Nix bill that was coordinated with the leadership that we'd have National Rust Prosecutor Concealing Carrier. We told the gun rights folks that this was a ploy to pass Fix Nix. Now, I thought that was supposed to fix it, but I guess it didn't. What it actually did is incentivized agencies like the VA and Medicare and Medicaid to start turning people in. That's wrong. That is totally wrong. And when you see the out-of-control aspect of our Justice Department, particularly our FBI, our intelligence services, and the illegal searches and evaluations, over 3.4 million Americans without their knowledge. This isn't just at some chance. This is an orchestrated chance. And the only way that we find in holding a tyrannical government out of control is making sure that all citizens have the right to protect themselves.
Congressman Gosar, there are other states have passed nullification laws, like for example, I have, I think it was, it's Idaho, I believe, passed back in 2014, passed a law that said that they will nullify any law that the federal government. And do you think that there's any chance Arizona would do something like that? We have some state representatives will come up and later and talk about that, but do you see any other movement across the country?
I think this is gaining speed because what ends up happening, it's not about what you're against, but what you're for. You know, I am sorry that people, there are victims. There are victims everywhere, no matter what you do. But you shouldn't victimize the people that do it right by taking something away from them. Something that our forefathers thought so keenly about, about how to keep a government under control. You look throughout history and one after another, the people that can't defend themselves are the ones that become victims. That's not America. That's not what we should be doing. And I think that we need to send a loud message to Washington, D.C., to wake up. When we saw this actually, this in New York about six years ago, they were actually going to expose everybody that had a gun. Interestingly enough, the people without guns said, no, you're not going to put that out. And the reason being is, is they knew they were going to be the victims. It was like, welcome to the front door. We have no means to protect ourselves.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else have anything to say, the Congressman Gosar?
I would just like to thank the Congressman for all this work on uranium and the Wild Horse and bureaus and everything you can do with your Western Caucus. We really appreciate your help, sir.
Well, thank you. Then thank you for all the support. It's a well-oiled machine and we need your support as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much for taking the time out of your busy schedule and the common support of this resolution idea that we're talking about today.
Well, it's great to see blue skies, smiling faces and people that stand up for the Constitution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Now, let's hear, let's hear from a person that's very important to, if we pass this, it's very important to have his support, is the Sheriff of Mojave County, Doug Schuster.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I would like to start off by saying that the Mojave County Sheriff's Office is a constitutional office. And by this, I mean that myself and my staff have sworn an oath to defend the people that are, the rights of the people that are bestowed upon them, not only by the United States Constitution, but by the Arizona Constitution. And we enforce the laws of the state without bias and without prejudice. These laws by design are necessary in ensuring for public order and the protection of all citizens. Arizona is one of, thankfully, is one of the few states in the Union that allow its citizens to carry firearms, both openly and concealed. And I applaud the state for that. I hope that continues. We're here today talking about the right to keep and bear arms, which I'm an ardent supporter. There will always be a need to regulate the use of firearms for the safety and security of our communities. However, the rights of our citizens to possess and carry firearms, God willing, will never be infringed. I would like to share with you a quote that was widely shared by a man named Thomas Jefferson. You may have heard of him. He authored the Declaration of Independence. He was one of the original framers of the United States Constitution and he was the third president of the United States. Jefferson was quoting a man by the name of Cesare Bicaria. He was an Italian. He was known as one of the great thinkers of the Enlightenment Age. And many considered him the father of criminal law as well as the justice system. And here's what he had to say. "The laws that forbid the carrying of arms are laws of such a nature, they disarm only those who are neither inclined nor determined to commit crimes. Such laws make things worse for the assaulted and better for the assailant. They serve rather than to encourage than to prevent homicides. For an unarmed man may be attacked with greater confidence than an armed man." Now, that was said over 200 years ago and I think the ideology behind it has more than weathered the test of time. So we're here today to discuss the potential approval, or at least the discussion of the resolution naming Mojave County a Second Amendment Sanctuary County, which was brought forth today by Madam Chair. And I will just say this, as a chief law enforcement officer in Mojave County, "The resolution as written simply affirms my existing position on the right to keep and bear arms." Further, "This resolution supports the way and the means in which our office has and will continue to honor all the rights bestowed and guaranteed to the people in the Constitution of our great nation." Whether or not you adopt this resolution, the Mojave County Sheriff's Office will continue to remain a constitutional office of and for the people," thank you, "as long as I hold the position of sheriff." Now, I gave you a quote from that Italian gentleman 200 years ago and here's your sheriff's quote. "The day they outlaw guns is the day your sheriff becomes an outlaw." Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions? Thank you. Next up, we have our state Senator Sonny Borelli.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity this morning. Although this may seem symbolic to a lot of other folks, this sends a message that not only are we going to support the U.S. Constitution on the Second Amendment, but to reaffirm Arizona's version of the Second Amendment, which is Article II, Section 26, which every citizen has a right to possess and bear arms. There has been a big movement in the state legislature to try to undermine that numerous times. For example, the city of Tucson tried to do a sanctuary city to ban firearms within the city. The state had to run legislation to prevent them from doing a buyback, right? Which is kind of interesting because the city didn't sell weapons, so why are they going to be buying back weapons? But we had to actually run legislation for that to prevent the city from really overstepping their constitutional bounds and stepping and trampling all over the state constitution. With that, I'll take questions. Thank you. I support this amendment, this resolution.
Thank you. Any questions for Senator Borelli? Do you see any, any hope that the state legislature, maybe not this session, but at some point, if enough counties do things like this for backup, that they would entertain doing a nullification law?
Yes, Madam Chair, yes. If more counties and cities actually did this, this would send a clear-cut message to all the state representatives, irregardless of what side of the aisle they are on. Unfortunately, it's the other side of the aisle that keeps pushing for more and more undermining the state constitution and the U.S. Constitution. So this would send a clear message to those representatives that they should be supporting the citizens' right to defend themselves, number one, first and foremost, because when seconds count, the police are minutes away. So you have that right and you should be able to maintain that God-given right to protect yourself.
Thank you. Thank you. Senator? Next up, we have our representative, Leo Biassucci.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I just want to say first of all that I completely support the I just want to say, first of all, that I completely support this movement. I think this is something that is important, especially in this time where we have a lot of people who are moving to Arizona, and to show this symbol that we are some, a county that protects our Second Amendment and supports our Second Amendment, I think is vital in getting the right people to move to our district. I am somebody who's always been pro-Second Amendment, and, you know, Senator Borelli touched on this a little bit, about how we're starting to see bills come through the legislature, mainly from the other side of the aisle, that they're trying to control and take away our gun rights, one of those being the false flag bill that was introduced last session. Luckily, that got killed before it got anywhere to the floor, but I just want to make a statement here that I will always be a no vote on any bill that tries to take away those rights. This is something that was given to us. It's in our Constitution, and I will always support doing that. And I want you guys all to be clear, and I know Senator Borelli is in the same position, so. And, you know, I'm going to kind of follow the sheriff here with a great quote from, this one from Machiavelli, and it says, "When you disarm the people, you commence to offend them and show them that distrust, that show that you distrust them either through cowardice or lack of confidence, and both of those opinions generate hatred." So I just want you guys, again, to know, we'll always support this. I'm proud of what you guys are doing here at the local level, and I thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you for, I just want to thank you, Representative, for coming down today. And I wanted to remind you that in the legislature, all the desks have drawers, and that's where those bills go. Take away your rights.
That is absolutely correct.
Thank you.
And, you know, thank you, Supervisor. And, you know, back to that point about, you know, putting those bills in a desk, you know, we have that opportunity now. We have that privilege now at the legislature, because we're 31-29, 31 Republicans, 29 Democrats. If that changes, a bill that, like that, about the red flag bill, could get passed. And so, and I hope the people here that are listening understand how important it is that we elect people who are going to protect our Second Amendment, because the moment that's gone, I think our country is over, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's important that we control whose hand is on the knob of that drawer.
I agree. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Okay. Next up, from our neighbor city, Needles, California, who we based our first resolution of support, we have Mayor Jeff Williams. Come on down.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting us here to speak and hear how your vote goes. You guys are starting way ahead of us. We're unfortunately in the state of California. And it's a tough go over there right now with the Democrats having a supermajority in the governor seat in their hands right now. We know it's an uphill battle. We appreciate you supporting us on our battle. It's, with somebody to step up. Years ago, the city of Needles was the first city in California to declare ourselves not a sanctuary city for illegal immigrants. And that was good. That didn't get us much publicity, but we did that. We want to make sure the governor and state representatives knew where we stood. And then when we came up with this Second Amendment sanctuary city, that got us a lot of publicity, because we are in a blue state that's just taking away our rights as quick as they can get them, little bites at a time. When they passed Prop 63, which went into effect in July of this last, of this year, where now we can't even come into Arizona and buy our ammunition, we're going to have to go to Barstow, Blythe, those are the two closest cities to get our ammunition for hunting or anything. We said it was time to make a stand and step up and tell you, you're going to have a battle if you try and keep our, get our Second Amendment rights away from us. But I just appreciate you guys taking this up, and hopefully, we can get it passed, and maybe we can work together to get some common sense, not only to Sacramento, but Washington, D.C. would be great to have some common sense there, too. Not holding my breath, but it's worth a battle. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Any questions for the mayor? Thank you for coming down, and thank you for being brave and declaring Needles a sanctuary, Second Amendment sanctuary county in California. That is a brave act indeed.
Thanks.
Thanks. And Councilman Tim Terrell, who was the first one who actually brought it up in the council of Needles.
Good morning. I want to thank you all for taking this stand. We are still the only city in Needles, in California, that has brought up the Second Amendment sanctuary city, where most of our towns and counties are being sanctuary cities for illegal. That seems to be a trend that comes across the whole country. Several cities tomorrow will be voting on whether or not they're becoming a sanctuary city for illegal aliens. So this, as far as I'm concerned, is historic, that Mojave County and the Board of Supervisors is taking this stand along with us to protect our Second Amendment rights. When they take away our guns, then they'll take away our First Amendment. Then they will start chipping away at all the other amendments to where we are living under tyranny. So I applaud all of you for doing, taking the discussion and hopefully making the decision to join us and to join many other cities and counties across this country. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. Okay. And we are pleased to have a man who is now the, on the National Board of Directors for the NRA, and he's my neighbor in Bullhead City, and his name is Robert Mansell. Come on down.
Well, thank you, Madam Chairman. As a lifelong Arizonian and a resident of Bullhead City, I'm honored to appear before you in this capacity and tell you how much I do support the Second Amendment. And like Congressman Gosar said, it's not just the Second Amendment, it's the First Amendment, it's the Fourth Amendment, it's the Constitution. It's the Constitution to be interpreted as it was written traditionally, and that's where I'm at. So thank you for listening to me. And, Madam Chairman, you started off talking about the incremental attack on the Second Amendment. Well, in the last six months, that has been thrown out the window. If you look at the presidential candidates, they started off with magazine bans, bans on certain semi-automatic weapons, went to one of the candidates openly talking about mandatory buyback, followed by door-to-door confiscation. We have one of the frontrunners talking about taking a legal business and taxing it out of existence. Can you believe that? A legal business, you want to tax it out of existence? Followed by other candidates talking about taxes on ammunition, on firearms, to the individual that, in essence, is a backdoor confiscation that will put it out of the reach of many folks. And back to your word incremental, that's really a powerful word, this argument. Red flag laws were briefly brought up. You know, on the surface, they sound pretty good. Someone can say, you know, I know this person that's thinking about doing this, this, and this, and we can stop it. That sounds good on theory, but in practice, it really has a lot of problems. And the main problem is due process. Due process is a cornerstone of our legal system. Due process allows you to confront your accuser, to ask questions, challenge evidence, and present evidence of your own. None of this happens during these red flag things. And the second bad thing about a red flag law is accountability. Accountability to the accuser, the person that makes this accusation, are they held accountable for a false or misleading accusation? Because once this happens, and I think someone made a reference to some of these door knocks that haven't gone very well in the country so far, where people have actually been killed, no one's talked about the six months it takes to clear yourself, to get your stuff back, or the tens of thousands of dollars you may spend in legal defense. So all of this together, all these incremental things are now one big ball of wax, and I want to, I want to say I appreciate the County Board of Supervisors looking at this, and I hope you vote favorably on it. And one disqualifier, these comments are mine, not of the NRA. I am on the board, but these are my own personal comments, and thank you. And I want to also thank Congressman Gosar and the two representatives and everybody else that spoke. It bears well for our county to have that kind of support, so thank you, everybody.
Thank you. And I also want to mention, I don't want to embarrass him too much, but Robert Mansell was instrumental in helping us keep the fish stocking program on the Colorado River, which is thriving today. So thank you, when he was on the Arizona Given Fish Commission. Okay. I think that covers all the elected people who wanted to speak, so we are going to go. We have, we have a few people signed up. Armin Stange. Okay.
Good morning, Supervisors, Madam Chairwoman. Just a quick thing here, what I found this morning on the internet, there is a bunch of states what have counties what are joining the movement in the Second Amendment. East Tennessee County passed a Second Amendment sanctuary status. Colorado has 64 counties. 23 of them are in a Second Amendment status. Illinois has 63 out of 102 counties as a Second Amendment sanctuary. Maryland has three out of 23 counties in a Second Amendment sanctuary. Nevada has five out of 16. New Mexico has 25 out of three counties and six cities in a Second Amendment sanctuary. North Carolina passed two out of 100 counties already. Oregon has 13 out of six counties. And we have Rhode Island, nine out of 31 towns passed a status. And then we even have states now going into Second Amendment sanctuary states. So far, we have, as far as I know, we have five. One of them is Alaska, Idaho, Kansas, Missouri, and I believe it's Kentucky. Please pass the resolution and keep our gun rights.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mary McCord Robinson, who is opposed.
Yes, good morning. Mary McCord Robinson, you've got my information. Yeah, I'm opposed, but it's not because I don't support the Second Amendment. I am a gun owner. I own lots of guns, lots of different calibers of guns. I carry concealed. I have my permit. What I'm opposed to is bringing it forward at this time. I think there needs to be more discussion. I think there needs to be more and better understanding. This is the first time it's come up in this county. Social media obviously lit up a lot over the weekend, and I don't think enough people have really had a chance to really understand what it means to be a sanctuary city or county. I'm not in favor of the red flag laws as they're written today. I'm in favor of looking at them, but I don't think Mojave County is at risk right now. So I, the Constitution is there to protect us. We have a sheriff that just spoke and says he upholds the Constitution. I don't understand why we need another layer wrapped around it at this time. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Mary. Can I ask you a question? You said you don't think people understand. What's it mean to you to be a Second Amendment sanctuary county?
It means that you're not going to come and take my guns.
Right.
And you're not going to anyway, because I'm not going to let you. That's just, I mean, that's my right. That's my constitutional right.
So it's a resolution that supports what you feel? That's all?
And I don't think we need it. I just don't, I just don't personally think. I think it adds more divisiveness, divisiveness, that we don't need right now. And I get tired of hearing about this side of the aisle, that side of the aisle. Everybody knows I'm a Democrat, but today I may not sound like a Democrat, because I'm a rational person. So, thanks again.
Thank you very much, Mary. Okay, we heard from Robert Ernie Comma, who is one of the first people who came to me, and we discussed this. He's been rallying the troops.
Good morning. I had everything written up, and I'm basically just going to bypass what I was going to written out, because, I mean, you were just saying, you know, this subject is being decisive. But look at everyone in this room that's here in support of the Second Amendment. You know, it's actually broadened us together and actually opened a conversation on this. And this is what it's supposed to, is open a conversation to, to, I guess, show that what are our constitutional rights, are inalienable rights given to us, not by government or anything like that. And that's why we're here, you know? Armin has, you know, he explained a lot of states. You look at New Mexico, 25 out of 33 counties, even 30 out of the 33 sheriffs, all support. Even the Sheriff Association has written and saying that they're, they are not going to enforce any of these gun control laws. Nevada, not till far away, not too long ago. I grew up in Nevada, and I remember it was a very Republican state at one time, and how fast that changed. That's why we need to be proactive in trying to open this conversation. I've talked, I've traveled to Yavapai, I went to Coquino. I started the Mojave County for the Second Amendment and trying to get this conversation started. Many people support this. You know, like I was saying about Nevada, five out of 16 counties and all 17 sheriffs have signed in support of not pushing these gun control laws. Things I would like to see, Mojave County adopting the Second Amendment sanctuary status. The sheriffs and the Sheriff's Association across the state support such protection acts or preservation acts, is what they would call it. Many states like Oregon or, let's see here, it was Oregon and Kansas have already passed these protection and preservation acts. I would like to see eventually other counties adopting the status, and then the state actually voting for a Second Amendment preservation or protection act. That's what I would like to see. Thank you for your time, and thank you, everyone, for being here.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board. Yes, I am a big fan of the Second Amendment. But I am curious, and I'd like to ask some questions before I go any further. Some of the things that you outlined in your 38-page document that you threw on Facebook, one of them was about regarding Google's information collection and sharing of that information. Do you see that right now as government overreach and objectional to the Constitution?
Can I answer that? This is a regular.
It's on topic. We're talking about the Second Amendment. It's related to the Second Amendment.
The article says the feds requested it from Apple and Google. They're not just releasing it, they're being asked to do away with some of the privacy that they've promised their users, and that's what I see as a big red flag.
So overstepping privacy rights of the individual gun owners?
Yes.
My second question is, how would some of the things that you outlined in that 32-page affect counterterrorism operations here in Mojave County as far as information links?
I don't know. I don't know what that even means, so.
No one has ever thought about the other side of the issue, about?
This is a resolution.
Resolution.
It's not, it's not legally binding. It's a statement of a government entity about something that we feel strongly about. So it's not a law, it's not an ordinance, it's a resolution of support. That's it. So it's not going to affect anything that you're going to say now.
Okay, so my next question then is, do we have the support of the courts for some of the things, the resolution that you outlined in there?
We have the support of the sheriff, who has constitutional authority in the county. And what we're trying to do, if it ever gets to that point where the courts would have to get involved because of gun laws that are implemented by the feds or the state, then we would step up and fight them.
But until then?
Nothing's going to change until then.
Nothing's going to change.
Because right now, we have, we have the right to carry openly or concealed. This is for anything that happens in the future.
In the future?
Yeah.
Is there anything in the future that you, this board wants to take direct action or have the courts?
Well, I think you heard, Mark, I think you heard what our concerns are for the future, just like all these other counties and states and townships have done. It is a statement saying, if you decide to do this, we are going to fight. That's all. Okay?
My last question then. You know what? I'll just let that go. I would big support of the Second Amendment.
Okay, well, maybe another time.
Another time.
Thanks, Mark.
You're welcome.
Next up, Susan Jeffrey in favor.
Next up, Susan Jeffrey in favor. Okay, Jim, come on down.
Wow, some powerful people, powerful words. All right, I'd like to start off by sharing some views that some people wrote, and I'll start off this way. "America: To See Your Future, Look Through the Windows of the Past." Author: Unknown. "The fellow that can only see a week ahead is always the popular fellow as he is looking with the crowd. The fellow that can see years ahead has a telescope, but he can't make anybody believe what he sees because they can't see it." Author of that was Will Rogers. "America Will Never Be Destroyed From the Outside. If we falter and lose our freedoms, it will be because we destroyed ourselves." Author: Abraham Lincoln. "Freedom is never more than one generation away from extinction. We didn't pass it to our children in the bloodstream. It must be fought for, protected, and handed on for them to do the same." Author: Ronald Reagan. Okay. "Urban Warfare in America. Terrorist Strike on 9/11/2001. I was driving to work, listening to my radio when this tragedy happened. I was working at the Otai Mesa Border Crossing Commercial Facility located in San Diego, California, border with Mexico, Tijuana. After 9/11 happened, these words were spoken: 'If you see something, say something, no matter how big or small.'" Urban Warfare: First Responders. First responder could be anyone, your wife, your next-door neighbor. Look at America today, how first responders are being treated, and very sad. This alone should be enough to make Mojave County, Arizona, a Second Amendment sanctuary county. Please believe me, they need our help and support more than ever. Sheriff Schuster, please make Mojave County, Arizona, a Second Amendment county. I would rather have this right and not need it. This would be better than needing it and not having it. A lot of storms are brewing at this time. You have my full support. Thank you very much. On December 1st, when I was 39-years-old, on my anniversary, about 9:30 PM, I had a heart attack. If it was not for the first responders, I would not be here today. In 1976, I lost my right eye. Shortly thereafter is when I seriously started learning about how the world turns. Movies. Think about it. Coming to America, wow, look what's going on today. Escape from New York, wow, even Trump got on board on that one. Has anybody ever seen the movie Red Dawn? Hmm. Good luck to all. This is not a joke. We are going to need it, and I can prove it beyond a question of a doubt. I've been studying this stuff since 1977 seriously. I could show you a world that you didn't even know exists, or if you did, most people think it's a bunch of bull. But I've been studying it, I study it every day. Ask my wife. And I tell her, sometimes when certain things happen, I go, honey, very sad, but shortly, watch this, terrorist attacks are gonna happen. How do I know that? There's certain things I've learned. They know when to get a bigger bang for their buck. I've shared these views with law enforcement. The first time I shared a view was with an Arizona state trooper. Wow, why would I do that? We had a prospecting store in Southern California. This gentleman used to buy equipment from us, so I would talk to him, and then one day this certain thing happened, and I said, you know what? This is just the beginning. I know. The reason I told him that? He happened to be the bodyguard of the governor of Arizona. Wow. A few years ago, I shared some stuff with the Riverside County Sheriff's Department. I didn't get any response. I gave them a buzz. What's your thoughts? The gentleman said, you know what? Your stuff is very, very interesting, but the problem is, it doesn't give us the who, what, when, why, and where. But hey, it's just sad to know that things are gonna happen, there's nothing anybody can really do about it. But it would be nice if people knew, instead of being one step behind, you can be one step ahead of the game for a change. So please pass this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I was kind of rooked into this at the last moment, so I don't have nothing written up. But I have left California, and I see what's happening there. It's terrible. They're taking all of the rights away from the people. I heard the one lady say something about, we are not in jeopardy right now of really needing this, but are we gonna wait until we are, when things are falling down around us, and then we're gonna fight for this? No, we need to do it now. I mean, look at the red flag law. If it would have passed, Chairman, if, if I would have chose, I could have walked out of here, I could have got our awesome sheriff, and I could have said, you know what? She threatened me with a gun. They're gonna come take your guns. They're not gonna, you're not innocent until proven guilty. You're guilty until proven innocent, and whether your guns still remain accessible for you to have them back is up to them. And, yeah, like I said, I'm not real. But we need to do this while we still can, while we're not in jeopardy of it. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming down this morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board. My name is Don Martin. I live here in Kingman. I just want to say that I reiterate what I've been hearing from, from other Americans that feel like I do. We are not America, we are not the America that I grew up in and that many of us have seen. We are getting systematically stripped of our rights, and probably one of the most important is the Second Amendment. I know that what you're proposing is mostly symbolical, and it's not legally enforceable or binding to anybody else, but I think what it does, it sends a message to our liberal friends in Maricopa and Pima County that says, you know what? There's a group of Arizonans that are not gonna stand by and watch you take our rights away from us. We are not going to do that, and you and the Board here are to be commended for standing up for people like me and all these people out here who believe in the Constitution of the United States of America. So I just want to say that I hope you do pass this resolution, and we understand what it means and what it will mean down the road. But I think it's so important that somebody at some level, needle started it in California, bless their hearts, you're gonna start it in Arizona, and who knows where it's gonna go. But we have to take back our country. Our country is being taken away from us piece by piece by piece by the liberals, and we cannot just afford to stand by and watch it happen. Your actions here today will be the start of something in Arizona that hopefully will be like a snowball. Other communities, other counties will see the importance of what you are stating today and understand that me and all these people here and people all over Mojave County are in full, full support of what you're trying to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Don. And the last one who has signed up to speak is Mr. Kenny Works.
I didn't know whether to go to talk about the characterization of the facts or to explain the facts. I'm just gonna show you where I obtained my facts. Guns and Ammo Magazine, very last page, there's an essay on red flag laws. Everybody should read it. Range Magazine. I noticed not very many people buy them, because there's always a lot of them on the shelf, but that's an excellent place to find out the facts about what's going on in the Arlie Ermy, Gunny Arlie Ermy. Ready for the truth, cupcake? Wake up and smell the bacon. We're losing our beloved America to those goat humpers. Stop being afraid of being called a racist and grow a pair of and act like Americans. None Dare Call It Treason. John A. Stormer, this was, this was published in 1964. None Dare Call It Treason, 25 years later, published by John D. Stormer. Excellent reading. If you want to find out the truth, read that. American Rifleman, published by the National Rifle Association, sent out every month to all the members. Chronicles Magazine. You don't see it on the shelves very often. It's pretty expensive, and it's kind of religious-based. It's, it's published by a Catholic organization. When ancient opinions and rules of life are taken away, the loss cannot possibly be estimated. From that moment, we have no compass to govern us, nor can we know distinctly to what port we steer. Edmund Burke, Reflections on the French Revolution. I think just knowing where to obtain the facts, I don't, I won't bother characterizing them. I just want to thank you for the opportunity to say something about it, and I'm definitely in favor of the resolution that the, our, our Board of Supervisors, and I'm very proud of everyone sitting up there, that they've just been doing an outstanding job for as long as I've been coming to the meetings for the last five years or so. And I just think that they deserve the biggest hand that we can give them. Thank you.
Thank you so much for those kind words. Really appreciate it. Okay, that's all who have signed up, but I'll open it up if anybody wants to say something quickly. No, you already spoke, Jim.
First of all, I'm very nervous, because I did not prepare to do this at all.
It's okay, you just need to give your name and address.
Okay, Shelley Pylund, and I live here in Kingman, but also own property in Bullhead. I'm retired from the Sheriff's Department in San Diego, so I've seen all the good and bad things that have happened in the world, and have experienced many things. However, I do want to say thank you for having this go on today, because it's been twofold for me, because we have three generations here. My dad, myself, and my son. So because of this event and the way the world is going today, my son is able to be here, along with my dad, to experience your process and the process of the feelings of everybody in here. So I did want to say thank you for having this, and we are ardent supporters of the Second Amendment, and just thank you very much for the work you're doing.
Thank you so much. And thank everybody who came down there, is here this morning, our electeds, and everybody of citizens who care deeply about the Second Amendment. I appreciate it. So now I'm gonna open it up to the Board for any discussion or action or anything.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Angus. In consideration of our resolution, I'd like to make a motion for adoption, also a recommendation for an addition to paragraph 8. Whereas the Board of Members took an oath to support the United States Constitution and the Constitution of Arizona and the laws of the state of Arizona. And this would be the addition. And today reaffirm our commitment, the Mojave County Board of Supervisors does support the United States Constitution, the Constitution of Arizona, and the laws of the state of Arizona.
Anyone else want to say anything? Before we vote on the resolution?
Discussion?
Yes.
I just want to welcome all of our friends who have moved here to Mojave County and remind them that we believe in the Constitution and all of its amendments, not just the Second Amendment, but all of our amendments. I do believe in the right to keep and bear arms as firmly set forth in the Second Amendment and the United States Constitution. And I certainly don't believe it's necessary to pass a symbolic resolution to declare in Mojave County a Second Amendment sanctuary county to secure this right. However, with that being said, I don't see any harm in supporting Supervisor Angus in her wish to declare Mojave County a second sanctuary, Second Amendment sanctuary county, and therefore I'll be supporting her and this resolution, as it does send a strong message to Congress and our liberal friends that are now calling Arizona home. I am, I would like to see sanctuary removed from this resolution, because, you know, it's kind of the new buzzword when, when you say sanctuary city. Are you speaking of immigration or guns or, or, you know, it's just, it just seems to get confusing, because, what was it? Sonny mentioned that Tucson was looking at a sanctuary city to ban firearms, so it's getting really confusing out there. I would like to see this resolution titled Mojave County as a pro-Second Amendment county, and that would eliminate any confusion with what a sanctuary actually mean. And I think that means that it's free from other restrictions. That's one interpretation or definition, so that I would like to see reworded, if it's the pleasure of the Board. And then, in the last, last paragraph, it, it speaks about enforcing laws that are unconstitutional. And I wasn't real comfortable with that wording, because if, if something is challenged as being unconstitutional, I'll ask our county attorney, who decides whether or not that's unconstitutional? Is it, is it a board like us, or, or is it a court?
Well, anything, any question of whether something's constitutional, that would be brought to a court. The court will make the final decision whether something is constitutional. I mean, that's pretty straightforward.
Okay, that's it.
So yes, with that being said, I'd like to inquire as to whether or not Supervisor Watson would like to change his motion and maybe tweak the wording of the resolution where it's, it's more understandable to the general population.
I can appreciate your attempt for the additional information, but I think it does send a pretty clear message by saying, second sanctuary county. So I'll, I'll stay with my original motion.
Okay. Now, I want to remind everyone that while we sit here and talk about becoming a sanctuary city, down in Pima, they're voting this morning on becoming a sanctuary city for illegal immigration, and they don't have any problem with the word. So I think we have to play on the, on the ground that we're given, and that's the wordage, and, and everyone knows what that means, and anyone in Mojave County, I think, understands that, and if they misunderstand it, I think they'll be corrected, and everybody will understand what we meant to do here today.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Take a moment and expound on the purpose of the Second Amendment. We hear a lot about self-defense in regard to the Second Amendment. We hear a lot about hunting in regard to the Second Amendment, but let me take a moment and remind you, the purpose of the Second Amendment is to throw off an oppressive government. That is the reason why you have Second Amendment rights. If Jefferson wrote in the Constitution that it is your right, it is your duty to throw off an oppressive government, and the ability to, individual ownership of firearms gives you the ability to do that. And the first things that tyrants will do, whether it's Adolf Hitler, Pol Pot in Cambodia, Mao in China, Stalin in Russia, every tyrant will want to disarm the populace, because it makes you easier to be taken captive and to be subjugated. You can never let that happen. And bear in mind that, that right is not a right given to you by government. It's a right given to you by God. It's a right given to you by God that is only affirmed in the Constitution. It's your God-given right to be free. You were put on this planet to be free, and you need to keep that in mind. Those other benefits are side benefits that are extremely important also, but the reason that you have the Second Amendment is to put a check on the government. And bear in mind, this is an experiment in a self-rule. And when the founders created that, there was no other country on the globe that gave you individual rights. You need to remember that, and you need to protect that. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Johnson, anything? Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt this resolution with the added wordage that Supervisor Watson put in. Okay, let's do a roll call.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Gould?
Yes.
Chairman Angus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you all very much. Okay, we're going to move on. And I've also been asked to move item 50 because our sheriff has to leave, something very important. So without any discussion on that, item 50 is discussion and possible action to approve donation and ownership transfer of a 1997 19-foot 8-inch Boston Whaler boat to the Mojave Valley Fire Department from Mojave County Sheriff's Office. And this requires a unanimous vote of the Board because, we know, but explain why, because we're giving away property and not at value, right?
So under Arizona revised statutes 11-251, whenever we're transferring property, there's two different provisions. One is we can do that without auction, that's under Section 9. And then if you go down to the bottom, I believe it's Section 58, where you can do that for less than market value. So those are the two key parts. One, we do it without public auction. And two, less than market value. And we can only do that if it's to another governmental entity, and if you have unanimous consent of the Board. One thing that I've talked to some of the sheriff's representatives about, at least the sheriff's counsel about, was typically, typically, we don't like to donate things. This was a little bit different in the sense of, if I understand correctly, the boat was given to the Sheriff's Department to begin with. We didn't purchase it, it wasn't purchased.
That's correct.
And so secondly, you know, you can do this without public auction, and you can do that at less than market value. So that means that you could do it for a dollar or $10, and it would still be perfectly legal. So what's the difference between donate or do it at a nominal amount? In the future, I think it'd be a little bit cleaner to do it at a nominal amount, but really the effect is the same. The Board has the authority, as long as it's to another governmental entity, which this is, this is another governmental entity, to do it without public auction and also without, at less than market value. Those are the restrictions.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. This is really more of a housekeeping issue at this point than anything else. This boat was donated to our office back in 2005. It was donated from the Bullhead City Police Department. And this boat originally was purchased through SLIF funding. SLIF is the Arizona State Lake Improvement Fund, which was available at that time for all government entities to provide for public safety and law enforcement equipment for the use on the lakes and rivers within their jurisdictions. When this boat was taken from, or given from the Bullhead City Police Department to our agency, it was used briefly, and it was determined that this boat was not suited for our need. At that point, the then administration decided to send this boat over to the Mojave Valley Fire Department at their request, and they've had it now for over 10 years. And somehow, the transfer paperwork never took place. So I think it's incumbent upon us, in good faith as a county, to stand behind that original transaction, because again, this was something that I'm familiar with, and it did in fact occur where the Mojave County Sheriff's Office donated this boat, basically third party, from Bullhead directly to Mojave Valley Fire. Since then, they put a remarkable amount of time and money into the boat, so I would hate to see anything negative come from an oversight due to the lack of transfer.
Okay, any questions for the sheriff?
Comment.
Comment.
This is one of my favorite boats. And I've been waiting for one of the agencies for years for one of these to come available for bid. But in this case, I certainly will support this transfer, so I'll make a motion to do so. Make a motion to transfer from Mojave County to the Mojave Valley Fire Department.
We got a motion and a second?
Discussion?
Discussion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just think we need to have staff look into the liability issue for the last 10 years. Well, Mojave Valley Fire had a boat that belonged to us. I'm sure we were on the hook if something happened, so. I don't think these things should be going on in the county where we don't have control of our inventory, but I support it.
Okay. Anyone else? So we have a motion? Do we have a second?
That was my motion.
Okay. You already said, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Watson, our aging fleet will be coming to an end soon, and there will be plenty of opportunity to obtain more watercraft. Have a good day.
It's only 14 months away. Thank you.
And Supervisor Watson, if I win the lottery, that's what you'll get for your birthday present.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, now, we got to kind of go backwards. Get my stuff in front of me. County manager's report's next. Yeah, yeah, we're back. Yes. Number three, county, I know, but we, because I think that Susan McAlpine came in. So perfect. Come on down, I'm yielding my report time to you.
I don't know if I have this upside down or not. Anyhow, thank you very much, all of you, for having me here today and supporting my appointment to the BLM Wild Horses and Burrows Advisory Board. We haven't had much time to talk since your chairman asked me to come today, so I had prepared six minutes of what happened over four 16-to-18-hour days, if that's appropriate.
Without objection? Go ahead.
I'm interested. Thank you. As a Board Member, I represent the BLM and the Forest Service as a special government unpaid employee. My role is to analyze information and provide expert advice to help our agencies manage and protect these living symbols of the West. We are asked to develop meaningful recommendations that can be implemented to reach BLM and Forest Service goals. We analyze the information provided at meetings, including science-based information and public input to make these recommendations. When casting votes, we consider all of the information, and I base my vote on what I feel is best for our wild horses, burrows, wildlife, and environment, not the opinions of other affiliations or interests. My appearance at this meeting does not represent the voice of the Advisory Board. I'm presenting my personal opinions today, and what I need to tell you without hesitation is that although it was disappointing to not have an Arizona representative on this Board for many years, this group of individuals on the Board currently are the most highly educated, concerned group of experts you will find anywhere. They are committed to recommending long-lasting and permanent solutions to the degradation of our Western lands, the humane management of our wild horses and burrows, and the environment that we leave to future generations. So what happened in Washington, DC? On Tuesday, we were provided federal security briefings and assigned federal protection. As private citizens, we visited with a number of senators, congressmen, and their aides to discuss the following points. The declining ecological conditions of the West. The critical point is now for the West's rangelands with their fragile desert ecosystems. We have reached the point where time is no longer on our side. The ultimate consequence is that not only do habitat, wildlife, and plant cover deteriorate, but the very horses and burrows we are seeking to protect suffer along with all of the creatures within that ecosystem. The multiple-use mandate of public lands. Resources on rangeland in the semi-arid to arid West are limited, and BLM has a multi-use mandate. Special interest angle towards whatever use is pertinent to them. But the BLM must continue to manage these lands in balance and within the context of that multiple-use mandate. This means compromises on all sides, which you know is not easy to achieve. The current approach is unsustainable. The Wild Horse and Burrow Management Strategy of gather and remove, wait until populations climb again, and then gather and remove is neither sustainable nor working. If we continue to degrade our ecological resources, the wild horses, burrows, wildlife, and livestock suffer. The American taxpayer pays over $40,000 for the life of every wild horse in holding facilities. There are currently over 50,000 wild horses in federal care and 88,000 on the range, with populations increasing by 20% every year. The issues for the BLM is the available space for holding animals taken off the range, the number of adoptions that are available, and of course, budgets and public pressure. As a result of our private meetings and discussions at the public hearing, Senator Romney responded to the requests of several senators, congressmen, and their staff to invite Eastern members on fact-finding missions so that they can understand the magnitude of this issue. Nick Mediella, is that how I say his name? He's on the Senate Committee on Energy and Natural Resources, is collaborating with Senator Romney, and have also spoken with Congressman Gosha's office. An interesting proposal came up during the call to the public. There was a proposal to provide tax incentives to large landowners who accept herds of wild BLM horses. These incentives would sunset after the herd reached their full lifespan. Since our Board, the BLM Board, does not have taxing authority, that issue has been shared with Congress, and I shared it today with Congressman Gosha. So what's the good news? The Senate passed their 2020 spending bill on Friday with a $35 million increase for the Wild Horse and Burrow program, which will focus on non-lethal wild horse and burrow management. The American Veterinary Medical Association and the American Association of Equine Practitioners have recommended policies to manage the overpopulation of wild horses and burrows nationally, including humane population management through long-lasting effective contraceptives, permanent sterilization, removal of animals from the range, and the development of new adoption and sales strategies. And I don't know if you're aware, but there's a BLM proposal and program right now to remove 50 burrows from the Black Mountains. And that should be in process starting the first. Fifty, five-zero. Anyhow, if it hasn't happened yet, it's on the list. It should be happening soon. And the Florence quarantine was lifted on Friday so that adoptions for horses and burrows can go forward. And then the last thing that's happened is that I've been invited to join the Advisory Board for low-stress handling of our wild horses and burrows and investigate better ways of handling them during capture and holding. The bad news is litigation continues to be the main reason that BLM has failed to move forward on addressing the overpopulation of wild horses and burrows. Sadly, many of the advocacy groups who litigate against the BLM, who solicit funds to protect wild horses and burrows, do not have one BLM horse or burrow in their possession. As you know, this will continue to be an uphill battle to bring everything back into balance. However, I can assure you that the current BLM Wild Horse and Burrow Advisory Board will do everything we can to bring reasonable advice and recommendations to the BLM and Forest Service. And I will continue to bring Arizona's wild horse and burrow issues into the forefront. And you may be asking what my plans are for the next three years. I hope to become as educated as possible about the wild horses and burrow issues in our state, to also become educated about the differences as equines between horses and burrows. And I'm looking forward to investigating the generic diversity argument which the advocates use against reducing herd numbers across our nation. And I hope to keep all of you involved in what's going on. So Hildy, sorry, Chairwoman Angus, I have provided backup information for you. I emailed it to you, and I also have a hard copy. And Supervisor Watson, I have materials that you lent to me. Do you have any questions?
Does anybody have any questions for Susan?
If I may.
Okay.
Thank you, Chairman Angus.
Chairman, if I could just interject briefly, if we could just keep it very minimum, we're just, we're still on the
It's just a report.
I know, just sort of just kind of keep it at minimum so we can move on. Thank you.
First, congratulations to
Thank you.
Been a long haul getting here. On November 12th and 13th, the state of Arizona Bureau of Land Management State Office will be having our Resource Advisory Council meeting at that time. And I would like to invite you to attend that meeting if you'd like. That's in Phoenix on November 12th and 13th. If you haven't already been invited, thank you.
Thank you. I'll let you know, I'm in Scottsdale on the 13th and the 14th, but I think I may be here on the 12th.
Okay. Supervisor Gould?
Madam Chairman. Susan, does the BLM still run their adoption program for horses and burrows at the county fair?
I haven't heard about that. They're doing it out of Florence next weekend, I believe. But as far as I've seen anything, I haven't seen anything for the fairgrounds.
They used to go around to the county fairs and that adoption program. We had a burrow that we adopted about, gosh, 15 years ago from there, and I've got another BLM burrow that we took from a woman, or got it from her daughter, and that woman had passed away. But I was curious whether they were still doing that program or not.
They've moved on to an online program that's available to everybody for adoptions. And I think they've moved into more of a central location type of adoption program, just because of the expenses involved, and then the standards of care that are involved in setting up the adoptions, transporting the animals and all of that. But if you have a chance, you really do need to go online and take a look at their adoption corral. They introduced it this last weekend, and it is phenomenal, the information you can get now online. And they'll actually bring the animal to the closest site to you. And if when you meet the animal, you're not happy with that animal, you don't kind of form a bond, then you don't have to purchase or buy that animal, you can look at others that would be available.
Thank you. Supervisor Bishop?
Susan, I just wanted to thank you for sticking with your dedication and applying year after year after year and getting several of the supervisors here to write letters of support. You finally made it. God bless you. And it's comforting to know that somebody from Mojave County, or just somebody from Arizona, is sitting on that committee. Thank you.
Thank you. And I really do believe it was a matter of the right time at the right place. This Board is phenomenal.
Thank you. Supervisor Johnson, anything? Susan, when I kind of was, took it back when you said 50, because there's 50 on the golf course at Laughlin Ranch. So that is a very low number. I've been told that it was going to be a lot more, so I'm going to have to make some phone calls on that.
Yeah. In the package of information that I sent you with all of the roundups that they're going to be doing this year, I have it for you. So I don't know if I can approach Ginny, or I should leave it somewhere.
You can leave it with Ginny. And Supervisor Watson, I'm sure if Senator Romney wants to bring some people from the East, we can give them a good tour, huh?
Correct.
Okay.
And I would love to be invited to that one.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you all again for your support.
And look forward to all your reports.
Thank you.
Okay, now, that was just number three. Number four, approval of the October 7th Board of Supervisors meeting minutes.
Chairman, actually, that was number two.
Oh, okay.
Version of reports.
I was just, I was just going to go with the inevitables, but do we have a county administrator's report?
Madam Chairman, tomorrow, I'll be attending the Mojave Valley Irrigation and Drainage District meeting. I needed to bring to the Board's attention that in addition to them discussing the Bureau of Reclamations review on of Reclamations review on their conservation plan and water management plan, there's two items that are starred for executive session. One of the items is discussion and video update to advise the board regarding Mojave County's board meeting of October 7th, 2019. That was the board meeting that we had Patrick Cunningham here, and Patrick and I gave a report to the board regarding their intentionally created surplus and following program, and also our lands in, our land in Mojave Valley Irrigation and Drainage District. In addition, their board is going to be discussing an update on their intentionally created surplus plan in executive session. I'm hoping that once they adjourn their executive session, they'll at least give a summary or an update on those two items for the audience. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you very much. Okay, and now, I need a motion for the approval of the October 7th Board of Supervisors Meeting Minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Does anybody need to take a break, or can I just go on to the call to the public? Break? We're good? Okay, I'm going to now open the call to public. Those wishing to address the board, the call to the public regarding matters not on the board agenda must fill out and submit to the clerk a call to the public request to speak form. A public body may make an open call to the public during a public meeting, subject to a reasonable time, place, and manner. Individual members of the public body may respond to criticism made by those who have addressed the public body, may ask staff to review a matter, or ask that matter to be put on the future agenda. We have two people signed up. I don't see Mark Shaver anymore. I think he left. So Joy Bancroft, thank you for waiting.
Good morning, Chairman and Board. Wow, it's hard to follow Second Minions, this sanctuary, but my concern today is about code enforcement in the county. I live in Golden Shores. I live at 4682 Linden in Topock in Golden Shores, and I'm a Concerned resident, member of the Neighborhood Watch, and we are concerned about the properties in our community that are fire hazards, and I'm sure this falls in many communities in this county. A couple of months ago, we had a property that collected junk, and multiple cars that caught fire resulted in the property next door burning to the ground. They're still sitting there burnt, both of them, and not to mention the, how it affected the fire department, they weren't able to do their job because of all the collection of junk in that house, and it left a firefighter injured. He's still injured, hasn't been back to work. Our only avenue in our community is to pressure code enforcement, and we have many properties that are ISOs and hazards. I can tell you example, one property I see all the time has a area where all they're doing is storing outside cardboard boxes with things inside of them, Lord knows what, paper, whatever. And standing in front of it is five dead palm trees, like tall palm trees, that are ready to ignite any minute and probably start that whole property on fire. Last month, I spoke to the fire board in our community to allow the fire chief and his company to assist us in identifying properties that are fire hazards. And also, part of the fire hazards are the derelicts, the drug addicts in our community who ransack these empty properties, take things and dump things all over the ground because they ransack it, they leave it everywhere, and it also becomes a fire hazard. So what can you all do for us? Last I heard, there's two code enforcement people, and I think to get in, you know, identify some of these things and red-tag them and get people to move on them, is you need to add more help. Please add more, consider adding more help to code enforcement people in the county. And this would make it safer for our community. The more involvement code enforcement has, the more we can get rid of people, and we can make it a better place for us to live. It adds more value to our community. There's a lot of people there that are very, very concerned and want to have more value to their homes, and we don't have that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Ryan, you can jump in anytime you want, but just for clarification, the fire board should handle any kind of fire hazard there, and they have the authority to do that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else still, you want to come up and say something? It has to be something that's not on the agenda. Okay, come on down.
It's just from somewhere I overheard. I didn't know the Second Amendment thing was going on, and I thought, that's great. Then I also heard the BLM on the Board of Advisors or something. I spent-
What's your name?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And are you not going to talk about the Second Amendment though, are you?
No.
Okay, go ahead, and your name and address, please.
Yes, I'm Josh Wilson, I'm out of Mojave County.
Where in Mojave County?
Seenic, Arizona.
Okay.
Or Seenic, you guys have probably been there, beautiful place. Anyway, I went to a BLM meeting in 2014, November 12th, changed my life. Met a guy, he was telling me what he did for them. He works for APHIS, Animal Plant Health Inspection Services, their division out of USDA. They were there for a restoration project, and they're changing the way that they do restoration projects in the Parishant National Monument. Anyway, I looked up his organization, and you know, he was telling me how they tracked and found a bunch of caves by putting GPS on bats, and I was like, that is cool, awesome technology, you know, and they found 33 caves in the Parishant, that's neat. One of them had 12,000, was untouched for 12,000 years, neat. Anyway, so I was like, he was blowing my mind, then he said, you think that's cool? We're getting into the genomes of wolves, and we can change their DNA to make them less likely to go into a city. And I was like, whoa, that's not cool, buddy. Anyway, so I started looking up APHIS, and they are in charge of plants, or the health of animal and plants and such, and they, just like two months ago, they deregulated gene editing. There is, anybody can go get a CRISPR kit, you can pay about $1,000, and you could make a purple tomato if you want to, no oversight, and take it to the market and sell it. Anyway, so that's the food thing, and that's not, that is concerning, that's why I'm growing my own garden now and everything, but the other one is, I'm seeing a lot, so I started flying all over the country going to these, they call them stakeholder meetings, there's never one public person there. When gene editing came up on page like 30,000 of the federal registry, only 120 people commented for genetic engineering against it or for it. Every meeting I went to is only filled with companies that are pushing this technology, and the point is, they're using this in the National Seed Project through the BLM restorations and like if there's a fire, they, these companies are selling seeds that are drought resistant and stuff like that, so they have patents on the seeds and they're charging through the BLM the public money so that they can, and they put it in lease, so they're renting the technology of this genetic, this perverted patented genome.
Thank you.
Anyway, I want you guys to just be aware of it.
Spell that acronym that you gave us.
It's USDA, and it's APHIS.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I think that's it, so I'm going to close the call to public. Onto the consent agenda, the consent agenda items five through 40 will be considered as a group and acted upon by one motion minus any items pulled for discussion. Supervisors? Supervisor Johnson? Supervisor Bishop? Twenty-seven and 37. Supervisor Gould?
None today, ma'am.
Supervisor Watson?
None today.
I need a motion to approve items five through 40 minus 27 and 37.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, onto 27.
Madam Chairman, I pull this just because I simply want to call attention to the fact that we're sending a public hearing for November the 18th to hear protests and objections on the resolution of intention, and that's for the Malibu Road Improvement District. And I just wanted to call attention, in case any of my constituents are watching, I want to make sure that they're aware of this, although they will be getting written notification from Public Works. So with that, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thirty-seven?
Thirty-seven, Madam Chairman, I just had a question, probably of our attorney, Mr. Esplin, can we accept a resignation when it's only verbally stated? I know that was, that was a problem with the commissioners, with the P&amp;Z Commission, so.
I don't see any issue why we couldn't. If we know that, if somebody has told us, hey, I no longer want to be it, and the other thing too, just a little bit of this, I'm familiar with this particular commission, and my understanding, he's not been there for some time. I know the last two merit commission board meetings, he was not there. So I think, given that we've understood that verbally, and then also, given that he hasn't been there the last, at least the last two, if not more, then I have no problem with this.
Okay, motion to approve, item 37 is written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we are on the public hearings. I'm going to open the public hearing for item 41, discussion, possible action.
You need a break?
Anyone need a break? Okay. Approve the adoption of Board of Supervisor Resolution Number 2019-125, a rezone of a portion of Assessor's parcel, blah, blah, to allow for equipment sales and maintenance in the Littlefield vicinity, Arizona Strip area, Mojave County, Arizona, and the commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. Anyone want to speak to this? I have nobody signed up. I close the public hearing.
Motion to approve?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Opening the public hearing for item 42, discussion, possible action, approve the adoption of Board of Supervisor Resolution Number 2019-126, which is an amendment to the Mojave County General Plan from an MDR land use designation to a GC general commercial land use designation. This is in Lake Havasu City vicinity, and the commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. Anyone here to speak to item 42? Hearing and seeing none, I close the public hearing.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I move that item 42 be adopted. Second, the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm opening the public hearing for item 43, discussion, possible action, approve the adoption of Board of Supervisor Resolution Number 2019-127, which is a rezone from a RMH residential manufacturing home zone to a C2 general commercial zone. Again, this is in Lake Havasu City, south of Perro Drive, east of London Bridge Road. Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. Anyone here? Forty-three? Nope, I close the public hearing.
Madam Chairman, I move that item 43 be adopted.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, we need a second, I'm sorry.
I'll second the motion.
Eagle ears. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Regular agenda, brought to us by Human Resources Director Ken Cunningham, item 44, discussion, possible action to approve changes to personnel policies and procedures, Section 5.2 Workplace Violence Policy.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Can I make a request from the board? This, and I apologize to the board, this kind of got past me regarding the workplace violent. On Section 5.2.8, prohibited behavior, add the following language, even though it sounds nine, even though it sounds, it sounds reasonable, display of a weapon in an unsafe, intimidating or threatening manner. One of the things, if you recall, when you were elected supervisor, you know, we took up the issue about prohibiting guns in Mojave County, and one thing that, in working with ASEP, we were very careful not to address anything regarding weapons. And my concern is in stating some prohibition, it gives the appearance that we're actually allowing the use if these prohibited activities weren't present. And what I would like to do is, I'm not opposed to this, but I'm not sure that ASEP had been consulted regarding this particular issue.
Do you think we should just continue this item?
I would like just to remove 5.2.8.9 from the discussion.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion just to continue this for 30 days, that way we-
Yeah, I think that's the right course.
Seven.
Okay, a motion to continue, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mike. Item 45, discussion, possible action, approve changes to personnel policies and produce Section 62.2 on vehicle use policy.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Forty-six, this is brought to us by Steve Lotosky, discussion, possible action to approve a budget transfer of $75,000 from Parks Contingency line item to Community Parks, with $40,000 moved to furniture equipment, $35,000 moving to line item, blah, improvements to land, which will permit Mojave County parks to purchase new playground equipment, materials to refinish the basketball court, and installation of concrete walkways at Veterans Park in Golden Valley. Supervisor Bishop?
Thank you, Chairman Angus. The park in Golden Valley is really the only means the community in Golden Valley has to meet where it's politically neutral. There is the Fire Department Meeting Room that's used for public meetings, and then there is a private landowners association that sometimes use, but there's really no place for the community to get together, and I think it's very important that, because the county park is used for that venue quite often, that be the first community park that gets these types of improvements. And I understand that as time goes on and there's money available, the other community parks will be looked at as well. So I'm certainly in favor of this, and I think our Parks Director is here to answer any questions anybody might have, but I have-
Any questions?
I have drawings if anybody wants to see their, what they're proposing, in color.
Okay, any discussion or questions? On the board? Nothing?
CNN, I make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 47, discussion, possible action, acknowledge receipt and refer to Public Works, a petition to Mojave County Board of Supervisors requesting the East Spring Valley Drive from Hackberry Road to North Cooper Road in the Hackberry area, length of approximately 1.31 miles to be accepted into Mojave County road system for regular maintenance.
Chairman Angus, I'd like to make a motion for approval.
Motion. Okay, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, three to two. Next item, 48, by Deputy County Attorney Ryan Esplin, discussion, possible action, take no action response to notice of class action and national opioid litigation. By taking no action, Mojave County shall remain within the negotiation class of the class action lawsuit and will forego the opportunity to withdraw from the negotiating class by the November 22nd, 2019 deadline. Do we need explanation, or do we just want to go to a motion?
It's up to you if you want me to provide an explanation or anything, I can explain anything in general to the public if you like.
With the board's pleasure.
I can give you just a brief little-
I'd make a motion to accept the attorney's recommendation.
Second.
Second, the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Item 49, brought to us by our Mojave County Assessor, discussion, possible action to approve the request for financial support from Mojave County Complete Count Census Committee in the amount of $20,000 sourced to the Board of Supervisors General Fund for the 2020 census for the following mileage, including per diem when necessary, $3,000 promotional items to include banners, signs, car magnets, and giveaways, $13,000, marketing, $2,000, and name tags, office supplies, and flyers, $2,000. Gene, do anyone have any questions or comments?
I do.
Okay. I had a feeling you would.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We formed this committee, and reading the backup from the federal government, it was supposed to be, we put people on it who were, I don't want to say movers and shakers, but had connections in different communities where they could contact the Rotary Club or whatever was popular in their area, and have them present it to their groups. I know the person that I appointed came down and, you know, I printed out all the stuff they wanted on the, out of my budget, which, you know, is no money at all, but I don't know that we're getting into- But I don't know that we're getting into... If I was to go to Supervisor Watson's area and tell everybody how great I thought this was, they really wouldn't care, because I'm not Supervisor Watson. So I think it's more important upon us for them to contact the people in those areas that have the friendships, or have the relationships with the people in that area, to have them do it, because you're just a stranger showing up. You know, I don't think that we set this up as a per diem travel organization, and I think any kind of things that can be printed up should be printed up, you know, through our budgets in our each office. That's all I had.
Okay. Anyone else?
I have questions. I've been going to different events, and I'd like to hand out information such as Supervisor Johnson suggested, and I've called Jeanne, and she said she didn't have anything, because she didn't have a budget yet, and so I guess that's what prompted this to be put on the agenda. But I see Bullhead City twenty-twenty representatives were at the Walk Away From Drugs, handed out information to our residents that attended that. I've been to, oh gosh, Dolan Springs had a big celebration, sort of chloride and Andy Devine days, and I've seen nothing being handed out by the county. So I'm just wondering what this committee's doing, or what do we expect them to do? I mean, I kind of thought we'd be all over the place by now, so maybe Jeanne can...
They've been trying. It was put off for a couple meetings here, just to get the commission together, and then deciding or understanding what they needed to do as a committee. And then understanding that, in order to go places like Colorado City, we need per diem, we need gas mileage. I have a nice young lady that's going all over Yucca, all the way to Mojave Valley, because it's Supervisor Gould's district, and it takes a lot of gas to do that. We're not looking for, we're trying to be very, very conservative, but we want to give those handouts. We want to be able to do that, and just being able to do that's going to take the time to order it. We have to get the budget, so that's why we're here. So we're really trying to get that, so we have giveaways. The cities were there first. They were doing this probably a good four to five months before us, before we started.
Gene, Mojave, Bullhead City allotted two hundred thousand dollars to this effort. They've printed up a lot of things. I mean, can't we just piggyback on some of our partners? And, you know, I don't think twenty thousand is a lot, but I think originally, we were told that the state was going to reimburse us, or pay for this. I mean, has anyone ever gone and found out about that? It was going to do it through the Commerce Authority, or something like that, but has anyone called them?
Right. No, we had them here, speaking to our committee, and that's where it took us a couple meetings to understand, they aren't going to provide anything for us in this case. We make, we make over two hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars per person that we get to sign up on the census, so it's worth, it's worth us doing, putting a little investment in there. But, you know, the fact is, is they kind of handed it to us and said, okay, now it's up to you. So I think it took a meeting or two to understand what was up to us, and we don't want to double up on what Bullhead City's doing, and what Kingman's doing. So there has been interaction with the other committees. Other people have been on the committees, so we understand what they're doing, but we have a lot of space in between. Colorado City is one area of example, that we got to go up there. And there's just a lot of areas that we want to be able to attack, that the other cities aren't attacking.
Okay. But the material that they've printed up, and whatever they did, it's generic. It's not just specific to their cities. My point is, from marketing, just from a marketing background, you don't want to have too many messages. I mean, if people are used to seeing a green colored thing, sign, or flyer that says something, you want it to be consistent, so why can't we partner up with the cities? And if, you know, what do they call it, of scale?
Economy.
Economy of scale, and things like that. We don't have to reinvent the wheel.
Understood.
But we do need things to give out, and be at countywide events, I believe. I don't think twenty thousand is a lot, but I'm going to make some phone calls and find out why we were promised, not just from the state, but from the federal government, that they were going to give us money towards this. So I'm going to make that call, and I'll report back.
Yes, please do, because they pretty much told us, when they came to us, that it's up to us to do the marketing and get the people to do the census, which is really what the whole goal is, is to get more people to do the census, which is our job.
Is Lake Havasu City doing, have they put in money and doing stuff on their own as well?
They have a small one, but they have, it's too early for them. They have, I mean, they've had a few meetings, but nothing, and the person that I appointed has participated in those meetings. But I think, just like with Colorado City, obviously, if you get it up to the manager and the mayor and those people, they would have better, at least in my opinion, have a better chance of getting it out to the people than we sending volunteers up there and expending money. I mean, we all know it's tough to get in, it's tough to go even to Bullhead. I mean, if I went to Bullhead, nobody cares what I have to say.
Who approves that?
Well, it's going to have to come back to us to say that, you know, if we're going to be doing this traveling, who's traveling, and what the time is. But I think most of the stuff can be sent in the mail. You know, if we, you know, help with flyers, or whatever it is, like you're saying, you need something to pass out, because where are you going to pass it to? The people that aren't signing up probably aren't involved in the clubs that are out there now, anyway, you know? So it's going to be up to those communities, just like with the lady who was talking about Golden Shores. We got the Fire Department, everybody usually depends on the Fire Department. Those places are good, instead of having somebody travel and try to, you know, we've all been to club meetings where somebody comes and talks and just bores us to death because we didn't care about it, you know? Unless it was one of our people trying to, you know, expound upon how important something was. But that's mine. I think we're putting these people in an unwinnable position if we say, you know, you need to go up there and get this done, and...
But for the people who've already traveled and done things on the direction of this committee, they need to get reimbursed, because if they were told, they would be reimbursed. I just got a text that there's a gentleman who's already accrued a thousand miles for doing the work of this...
Lady did, yes. And we're trying to be as conservative as possible when it comes to Colorado City. We believe that we'll be able to do all the communications over the phone, and we've already discussed with the communities out there, how they can help us. We didn't want to have to come to you a million times for, okay, well, we couldn't do this, or they have a function up there that's really going to be helpful. Their count's really important for us right now, because they don't understand it as well, and they think it's people that are getting too close to them. But we really believe their count's important, but we don't believe we're going to need to go there, but just in case, we put that in our budget. So...
Right now, it's just printing and getting things to hand out.
Yeah. It's things to give out. It's koozie cups and stuff like that, so people remember and understand how important the count is. It really garners us a lot of cash. In fact, Nicole can kind of give you, she put some numbers together, maybe I can share that with you, some numbers that...
Jeanne, I have a question before Nicole goes into that. How did you rack up a thousand miles, when you don't have any literature, anything to hand out, or any...
It was going to the different communities and organizations all through Mojave Valley and Yucca area multiple times, so she can actually use their voices. That's what her... To set up subcommittees, so then that way, it's their voices, instead of us having to go a million times. So that's where she just got on the ball and got people started, and she's got people out there and subcommittees already on the roll, waiting for us to give some giveaways out, and stuff like that. So I don't think you're going to find that those kind of miles continuous, but it was the first three months she's been working on this, and she is not getting reimbursed.
So you have a committee, and your committee members are developing subcommittees, and...
Yes, because we have so many different areas.
They're not going door to door, right? They're just going to community functions?
Correct, correct, correct. But, you know, going to the Rotary, like we had her going Lake Havasu, and the different communities and the different organizations are the ones that are going to actually be our voices. So it's meeting up with those organizations.
I hate to be the naysayer again, but if somebody has been driving a thousand miles, we have forms that have to be filled out with insurance and everything through the county, because if this person is representing us and gets into a wreck, or something...
I believe those were already done when we had them on the committee, but they just, she has not submitted anything, and she's already willing not to submit something, but she did tell us that this is about what she's driven.
Right. Yeah, I just want to make sure people are covered if they're doing things for us, so in case something happens down the road, but...
Yeah, I think they have to fill out a form before they get those miles.
Right. And then have to, you know, have the vehicle and the insurance and all that to be approved. But it's like with, I don't know, maybe Mr. Esplin can clarify on, like, giveaways. I don't know what the county can...
I think if it's, I think if I remember correctly, and I have to double check in eleven two fifty-one, but I think if it's like nominal stuff, like pens, and, you know, pens and mug holder things, those things that just have nominal value, it's okay. I mean, you're promoting Mojave County, you're getting something like that, that's, those are fine. It's when we're giving away assets and stuff, that's where we have concerns.
I don't think it says Mojave County, it's just, it's a census, so we're not doing it for Mojave County, that's where...
Still, as long as we keep it to nominal stuff, you know, the trinkets and things that you normally see, I don't have a problem with it. That's why we leave it at that.
What is twenty, what will twenty thousand dollars actually do? I mean, have you thought about how you're going to use it?
Yes, we went through, I believe it's on your documents, on different things, from marketing, to fuel, to, you know, they have to come here for our meetings every month, and all of the committee members have come here and not been reimbursed for any of that travel, because we found that it's best off for us to have the meeting here, versus in the other communities, because we can have it televised, and people can watch it at their, you know, in the future, if they didn't get a chance to see it. So it's, we kind of went through, the entire committee went through what they thought would be good to invest in marketing, as well as what it was going to take to do our job for the next half a year.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board?
On the marketing, is that newspaper advertising, magazine ads? What is...
We threw that in, but also giveaways, like, you know, koozie cups, or pads of paper, magnets, some signs. We need some banners done for when we do have any type of, a fair, that we would show up at the fair, and we'd have banners on there.
You have that under promotional items, for thirteen thousand, and then marketing is a separate...
Radio ads. We were considering radio ads in the, in the spring, so people are prepared for it.
But also, the radio ads and stuff, I mean, the cities are already doing it. I'm hearing ads from the census, and Bullhead City's been running ads, so it's kind of, you know, I think just, you know, saying to our cities, we're with you, and, you know, it's such a nominal amount compared to what they're spending, but I don't want to double do what they're doing either. I mean, this should be for the unincorporated areas where they wouldn't ordinarily get the message from the cities.
Which is part of the discussion we had at our, the last meeting, was we don't want to double. We don't, we're working with them, so we don't do the same thing that they're doing.
Okay. And you think the radio ads would be handled by our media person as a public service?
And it might even be donated to us.
Yeah, they should be public service announcements.
Again, we're very conservative. Our entire group is very, very conservative. We do not want to spend money. We also just don't want to come back to you guys. We might only spend ten thousand out of that, but we don't want to come back and ask for more. We figured it's better off to ask too much than too little.
Well, I think that twenty thousand is really a nominal amount for sort of the Herculean task of what you're asked to do, and for nothing more than to show our, the other cities that we're in it, you know, as well, to support them. And I'm also going to do, follow up and see why we're not getting money, because we were, I mean, everywhere I went last year, they were promising us money, and I don't understand it.
I would love that.
Okay. Maybe they're just not asking the right people.
Do keep in mind that we make quite a bit per person, so if we weren't counted, if it's three hundred dollars per head, just think how much that's going to cost us if we don't get them to be counted. So it's very important that they're counted.
Well, also for the representation at Washington.
Absolutely.
Okay. What's the board want? Anyone?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Motion to approve?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Let's do a roll call.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Gould?
Yes.
Chairman Angus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you very much for coming. Okay, we've done fifty, and now fifty-one. Discussion, possible action, changes to and or rescission of ordinance twenty sixteen dash oh five, that created munich code, and replace it with the original source ordinances passed by the supervisors. We continued this from our May sixth, June third, and October twenty-first meetings, and I think we have a presentation, a short presentation, correct?
Madam Chair, members of the board. As we discussed before, we've been working with IT, specifically Nathan and Eric. They have done a fabulous job building this for us. We wanted to give you a little overview of what it would look like on our public website if we went forward with this type of ordinance display. If they could put this up on the screen. So this is what the website would look like at first view. All the ordinances would be listed here, keeping in mind that not all of them are entered yet. This is kind of just a demo program for you. There's a couple different options that people could do. You can view all of them, up to a hundred on a page, you can do as little as twenty-five on a page. The benefit to this would be basically the search ability. When we enter these into the system, we're able to not only put what's in the ordinance, so you could search actual words in the ordinances, but we can also add keywords. So if you're looking for home occupation, some people call it work from home, some people call it, you know, home business, we can actually add keywords to this as we go along. So if staff or the public come back to us and give suggestions, we can always update this and improve it as we go. So just as an example, say you were looking for something on library cards. You would put in your search. It would come up. The benefit to this is, you would click it, first would come up the ordinance itself, just the writing, so if you just wanted to read it. If someone wanted to see the actual ordinance, they have the ability to go in, and it will display the actual ordinance as it was adopted or recorded. The other benefit to this system would be, there's a share button, so say I want to send Chairman Angus something on library cards, so she can get some books, I can actually send her this link, and she can go straight to it. And at any time, these can be updated. There's also, in the, when we go to interim, there's also the ability to, if they're rescinded, things like that, it will mark them for us. We can refer to other documents in it. Because we have a lot of the latitude, working with our IT department, we can, we can make this as user-friendly as possible. Unfortunately, right now, I don't feel like our current system is as user-friendly as this would be, but again, that would be a decision of the board, if they wanted to make this change. And again, like, searches are really simple. There's a couple in here for, let's see, for like curfew, you would just search. Believe it or not, there are ordinances in our county for curfew. Some of them a little older than others, but again, you could always just view the document, view the original, and share the information as you'd like.
Thank you. Thank you very much. First of all, I really like those cowboys in the background. Did you see them? I've never seen that before. This has been six years in the making and we've had our stops and starts and a lot of, a lot of work. And I want to thank the clerk of the board and her staff, and Nathan McDaniel's and his staff for doing such a great job every time they've been asked to do something, whether it worked or not, they did it, and thank you for that. Any other board?
So I like the simplicity of the new system. I think going to the codification was a, was a mistake. I think we all thought it would be much better and, and more user-friendly, but it was just confusing. And, and we, if I remember right, I think Supervisor Angus, your, your group in Bullhead was going to go through, once it was codified, and clean up some of the old ordinances. And it was too confusing. I can see why nobody ever did that. So I, I like it. I'd make a, if there's no further discussion, I'll make a motion.
I just had a couple of comments. No, I think it looks good. I think it's critical, the search feature that, this may not happen to anybody else, but it seems like the word that I decide to search is never the word that is in the search engine. So to expand, add those additional words for the search feature so that people can find what they're looking for. Because in reality, what you're trying to do is people are, the public is trying to figure out what's the law on this, or what's the ordinance on that? Am I breaking the law? What can I do? So it needs to be user-friendly that way. And this looks great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. From the other side, I mean, we spent a lot of money on this, obviously because of an app staff that we had at the time that cost us that amount of money. Where we're now, where we're at now is not what I envisioned. I envisioned, similar to what Supervisor Gould was saying with, the words I use never seem to be the ones that they catch either. I thought we were going to break it down, so if it was, somebody calls up and says, yeah, I've got a P&amp;Z question, I look at, okay, look at section four, that's all the P&amp;Z ones. I thought we were going to have something where we could put it into a book form instead of just the searching. I mean, this, this is a great step forward and I think it did real well, but it's not what I was envisioning as far as something that we could say, yeah, there's section one, you know, paragraph three is, is where you'll find, you know, those codes. And I don't know if that would, the ones that I'm familiar with, I don't know if that would mean that we would have to go back, excuse me, and I don't know if we want to rescind some of the old ones and, excuse me, and update them to say, okay, you know, because we probably have a lot of them that overlap each other over the years. Nobody knows that one was in there before or something, something like that. But I mean, this is a step forward. It just wasn't what I was envisioning. And I think the clerk and the IT did a good job bringing up what, with what they had to work with.
Definitely.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Supervisor Johnson, this, this obviously is a starting point, but that's not to say moving forward. We couldn't move forward and, and work with IT or any other departments in the county to go further and hopefully, you know, move towards what you're looking at. We got to start somewhere, though.
But you mentioned your age. That's not a problem?
No, I'm much younger than you are.
Thank you.
Okay, then.
Chairman, I just had a quick question for the clerk.
Mind reader.
On this, I think it absolutely looks beautiful. Well done, both the clerk and as well as the IT department. I had a question about, you know, certain ordinances. As I've researched the ordinances and things, certain ordinances have just been completely repealed. Take, for example, the building code. We've done that at least, I don't know, six or seven different times over the years. We just, okay, do a new one, whatever. Does that list right there, does that show even all the ones that were completely repealed?
Chairman Angus, Attorney Esplin, we have the ability to go in there and there's, there's kind of a button on our entry side that will show if it's rescinded, repealed, however you want to word that. I'm not 100% sure at this point what it lists, what we can get it to list, but we can work with IT if, if that's something that we'd want to be able to put, that it was rescinded, repealed, replaced with, we can put those notes in there.
Cool.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve changes to or rescinding ordinance number 2016-05 that created municode and replace it with the original source ordinances passed by the supervisors.
Okay, motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Before we vote on that, if we could have a discussion on it?
What?
If we could have a discussion on that?
Okay.
On the motion?
Yeah, I think, I think the idea is, if I could defer to the clerk, but if I understand correctly, we wanted to implement this, though, starting the first of the year.
Chairman Angus, Attorney Esplin, that's correct. Because we only did partial entry until we got approval, we will need to go in and finish it up. The other thing is, I believe, and I'll have to go back to Mr. Esplin on this one, that we'll have to do some posting, required posting and publishing of the changes to this system. So we were looking for a begin date of sometime in the beginning of, of the year, so like first meeting in, in January, so that it can be a completed project along with all the legal aspects of it taken care of.
Okay, so you need me to amend my motion to reflect that?
How come it wasn't in the motion?
Yeah, we could, we could, we can make it effective, the, the January meeting, January 4th, or, I mean, was it, would it be the board's pleasure to pass an ordinance repealing it? I don't know what you guys think.
I think that was the purpose. Yeah.
We're repealing it. This isn't, this is a board action. So we could set it for, we could set it, do we want to make it for January 4th or we want to make it for the second meeting, just in case? Do you think we can get it done by the 4th?
If we can do it by the 4th, that starts the new year off clean.
And we'll also note, we also note, we have, we also have done some postings previously on this, but I just wanted to double check to see if we need to do any additional ones and stuff. So I appreciate that we can do this in January. So we would just make the same motion, but effective January 4th.
Okay.
I'll amend my motion to include...
Wait, hold on a second, let me think this out. We just want to bring it back on the 4th and do the postings?
Yeah.
I think that's the way to do it.
Why do we bring it back today?
Yeah.
Why do we even bring it back today?
Give them the authority to move ahead.
Yeah.
After they're ready to pull the trigger, then repeal the other ordinance.
Okay.
Okay, so at this point, I'm, I'm going to remove my motion and take a clean stab at it.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll withdraw a second.
Okay. Okay. You want to...
So continue this item to, continue this item to the January 4, 2020 meeting, during which time the staff will do any necessary postings and notices so that it can become effective on that date.
Okay, that would be my motion, Ms. Jenny.
Well, you're still setting the same date. I mean, why don't we just say, I mean, that's, something doesn't happen, it doesn't happen. Then we just continue it and...
But then on January the 4th, then we would, we would rescind the municode that time.
It's already, what if it doesn't get, which is not ready by the 4th?
I do have one other question as well. On January 4th, if we continue this, it's going to have to use this exact verbiage. So on January 4th, if you rescind this one, will you also have to approve something else? We won't have the ability to change this verbiage if it's just continued.
So what we could do is, so take no action on this, but then we bring it, then staff will bring it back, the first meeting in January, with it all clean, with the notices and everything going forward.
Okay, so we're not going to take any action. Everything's been withdrawn.
Again.
Just for the record, the clerk has had this on the agenda 15 times now for continuation for us to take no action? Just want to make that clear.
And, and also, does that cover the ability for us to move forward?
That was my question.
With no motion and no action?
Question, Chairman.
Good point.
Okay.
I would, I'm sorry, let's hear it, Chair, Supervisor Watson.
So we're giving our permission to handle it? Is that right?
I would say make a motion, make, here's what the motion would be, because we make a motion, make a motion directing staff to move forward with, to move forward for the implementation of the new system and, and rescission of municode to be brought back on January 4th. That way, we're doing an item, we're voting on it, we're directing staff to move forward with it, and then when we bring it back to the board on January 4th, we could do it at that time with a new agenda item, exactly how we want it to be.
Supervisor Johnson?
Just to be sure, that's 2020, January 4, 2020.
Sorry, January 6.
Oh, January 6, 2020.
Sorry.
Okay. Are we sure this time?
Yes.
Is this the one, the way we want to go? Okay.
Okay. So I've got part of this down, right? Direct staff to move forward for implementation of the new system on January 6 and...
January 6, say, January 6, 2020, and to, and for the rescission of municode at, at that time.
Okay. We have a motion.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Item 53, discussion possible action, direct the Public Works Department to engage in direct right-of-way acquisition and improvement of Apache Road, a county highway per resolution number 99-059 in the South Golden Valley area from county end of maintenance at Griffith Hall Road north, approximately 3.55 miles to Oatman Highway, in accordance with county standard detail number 60 with gravel surface and further authorized project funding in an amount not to exceed $500,000 sourced to Highway User Revenue Fund 205 contingency for right-of-way engineering and construction. Supervisor Bishop?
Thank you, Chairman Angus. This is an area of the Griffith Interchange and I-40 that's growing rapidly, and there's a number of businesses that are looking at that area that I'd like Tammy Ursenbach to speak about. But the road from the end of the paved road on Apache up to Pegasus is two and a half miles, and the company has damaged a lot of their equipment as they're bringing it into Pegasus. So that's what caused me to look at Apache Road to see if we could upgrade the road a little bit to make the traversing of, the transfer of these solar panels a little easier. And it was discovered that Apache is a county highway, and I think that became a county highway under Supervisor Johnson because of the improvements that were forthcoming at that time that didn't happen. So, so I think Mr. Lekowski has looked at the road and is ready to make proposals to do these improvements in two phases. But what I'd like to do first is, is have Mr. Lekowski and Ms. Ursenbach speak, and then I've got a small video that I'd like to play about the area. So Steve, we'll, we'll ask you to give an overview first and then Tammy.
with Mojave County adopted standards for regular maintenance. Staff estimated the cost of such a work would entail about $200,000 for the first phase, and that would be taking it north, as Supervisor Bishop mentioned, about two and a half miles to what we consider to be the northerly boundary of ongoing development at present. And then the balance of the one and a half miles would be taking the roadway up to Oatman Highway. The challenges that contribute to the cost of $200,000 for Phase 1 and about $267,000 for Phase 2 is that there are about 25 drainage crossings by which we would entertain at least culvert crossings, just pipe culvert crossings to kind of lessen the repeated maintenance of the roadway under weather conditions. So that pretty much sums it up. We're asking for the board to consider a $500,000 appropriation source to a HERF contingency. What happens is, HERF is currently trending about $700,000 ahead to our budget. This is a public works forecast, and again, we just monitor as the HERF postings go month by month. But as the board may recall at their last meeting, you all did approve appropriation of over $600,000, it was about $680,000 for a contingency funding. In the event appears for a road widening project, which is funded federally, about $1.1 million, goes over the allocated federal funds, and we had to align that with the engineer's estimate. We, of course, hope that the low bid would not be equal or above the engineer's estimate. The engineers never like to be low bid, but we would like to see that unfold, just to learn of our cost, you know, burden there, as well as we are committed to carrying out throughout the year in FY '20, pending some availability of ADAT millings off of Highway 93 pavement preservation project. We do intend to carry out hard surfacing of all the roadways that the Transportation Commission and Board had previously established as county highways reflective in the current capital improvement road program. And with that, I'll entertain any questions.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Lekowski. So we have to purchase rights of way for this project?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Gould, yes. Even in Phase 1, there is, while there is continuous public right-of-way, there are some sections that do fall short of the minimum standard that the county has adopted for right-of-way section. Of course, we would entertain approaching these property owners with the project in hand and see about what, where their position would be possibly to donate the right-of-way.
Sure. Does the Pegasus project have rights of way to, to get to their property?
Supervisor Gould, we would have to research that a little further, but I do recall Pegasus actually, well, Pegasus has a right-of-way to their property, to answer you directly. Yes, they, they do have access, legal access to their property via public rights of way.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? I, I have a comment.
Who would this benefit now and in the future?
Madam Chair, if I may, on some of this, a little history on it, when we started that project out there, we, we looked to the future for ingress and egress, and, and this road was a road that we would need, not only for travel and for businesses, but in case of emergency, another exit out of there. We had hoped that it would go quicker. Obviously, things slowed down and we didn't. I think the, you know, obviously the pavement of this road is out of the question, but I think there's a lot of interest being shown up there, and, and it's not only for the company that's out there now or companies that are coming in in the future. Anybody can drive on it, so I don't have a problem with that. It's not, because if not, then we should have had the company pave the road to begin with, but I don't think that was, that was needed at that time. That helps.
Okay, that does help. Thank you very much. Questions or comments?
Madam Chairman, I, I had one comment. And what would, the board's approving Phase 1 and Phase 2, the way this board action is, is written, and Phase 1 actually goes to the end of the, unless you correct me, Phase 1 actually goes to the end of the property being developed currently. And Tammy would have to enlighten us on whether there's any property contemplated to the north of that that's being looked at. But obviously, there's a two-track into that area. What would trigger the go-ahead for Phase 2? Would that be something that would be brought back in front of the board so they could make a business decision on that? Or would this, in fact, are you, is this, in fact, authorizing the complete right-of-way acquisition and construction of Apache Road all the way to the Oatman Highway? And also, I was curious how much right-of-way was to the develop, developing parcel? Thank you.
Madam Chair, County Manager Hendricks, yes, we are requesting authorization to pursue right-of-way acquisition as well as improvement of the, both phases, with Phase 1 being the northerly boundary of the Pegasus parcel. Currently, there's approximately, for the first half mile, 100 feet of public right-of-way, extending northward from the end of the paved section, where we see some right-of-way limitations in the context of the county standard, is there's approximately only 40 feet of existing right-of-way for 1,100 feet, another quarter mile north of that, and 30 feet for another, near three-quarters of a mile after that. So that's where we would have to, in Phase 1, look at securing some additional right-of-way, at least to meet the, you know, minimum standards for regular road maintenance. But the entertaining of approving both phases at this time may lend us certain, you know, flexibilities with regard to pursuing right-of-way acquisitions where we can enable that quite quickly. The other thought would be, you know, the entertaining of putting both projects together for an economy of scale and completing, again, just...
economy of scale and completing, again, just taking it to a gravel surface road.
Madam Chairman, could I ask one more? May I ask one more question? Just in my head, trying to visualize what you just told us about the right-of-way, the right-of-way deficiencies, the majority of that happens adjacent to 206, 10, 018, is that correct? So, your 40-foot and 30-foot that you discussed would actually be acquirable from the developing property. That's what I, I visualized from what you just explained.
Is that correct?
Madam Chair, County Manager Hendricks, I would have to confirm that, but where we are absent right-of-way is from Aquarius Drive to Oatman Highway, that's well in the Phase 2. Any deficiencies as it relates to adjacent to the Pegasus property, we certainly would, you know, approach them with some interest in presenting the project and seeing where they would stand in the context of, you know, providing any right-of-way donation to the county.
My point is, Madam Chairman, is if there is a right-of-way deficiency adjacent to the property that we're going to be benefiting the most from this proposed improvement, I would assume that they would be more than willing to go ahead and provide that, even if it did shift the alignment of Apache Road onto their property. That was my point.
I would, I would completely agree, and I, and I am remiss and apologize, what staff laid out in our report is really a definition of how the right-of-way is, changes continuously. We did not make comment on, you know, the adjacent parcels, the APN, so that's, but as County Manager Hendricks pointed out, I'm sure it would be very amenable when staff presents the project, as we would do with the other, generally, what we do is we make an outreach to a property owner, we explain the project, what's taking place, and entertain the landowners at their pure discretion if they would be willing to support the project in the context of making right-of-way available.
Manager Hendricks, it's been my discussion with the owners of Pegasus that they would be willing to donate any right-of-way if needed, and also, Phase 2, we're currently in competition with Nevada for Phase 2, which would be another $5 billion investment, and could possibly be located on Apache as well, and those right-of-ways then would be, would be available.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think our decision, excuse me, I think our decision today has to do with what's best for the county as far as economic development and for the public to open that road up. I think whether Pegasus is involved in it or not, you know, it shouldn't be our consideration. If that was our consideration, we should have done that before we approved them coming in there. So, I think that's what we should be looking at, is the overall benefit to the county. If it's something we want to do to help economic development, plus help the transportation of our people out in that area, then that's what we should be discussing.
Do you want to make a motion?
I'd like to.
Oh, you're not done yet?
No, no, we're not done yet. I'd like Tammy to speak, and then I have a video I'd like us to watch.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair and Supervisors. Thank you, Supervisor Bishop. I'm excited about this area, and I see that Apache Road is very important to the county at this time, and to the new businesses coming in, because it is right along I-40, and people can see those, see the property coming in off of that, excuse me. Currently, it's not just Pegasus that's looking at the area, we have several other companies that are looking at that right along Apache Road as well, and two of them specifically, Project Bahama is coming in within the next two weeks to look at purchasing land, anywhere from 200 to 1,000 acres along there. The one parcel of land I know for a fact that they're looking at is in between, it's just north, just north area of Pegasus, so that road would then benefit that company as well. The other company that's coming in, in the next few weeks, is Project Mountainland, and it also will be right along in that area. With the other companies that are coming in just south of Pegasus, some of those companies, it's going to put probably about 600 people on that road on a daily basis, 24/7, so it's going to be ongoing back and forth, which means that there could be a need for emergency access, and that's one of my concerns, is that that would take it all the way to the Oatman Highway, giving another access out. We have one company, that's a very large company, looking to come in south, that's going to be a high gas, natural gas user, and if anything happened to them, or Praxair or something else, it could be that the Griffith exit with that many cars on the road could be quite congested, or maybe not even accessible, and so this would be another area, another road of access to help those people.
Okay, thank you, Tammy, and you bring up some, some really good points, is people are looking at this already, and, and this is just a gravel road. It may, in the future, we may want to pave this road if all this comes to fruition, but it's also the emergency exit. We have Praxair out there, and, and the prison, and this new gas company, should that come in, and that's looking very promising. So, I think the growth is right here in this area, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but if, if we approve this today, that may be the decision-making piece that's, that's going to help those decisions that's going to be made in the next couple of weeks.
That's exactly right. And I've got three or four other companies looking at that road as well, but they're not as close to deciding.
And then you did a projected impact from these companies, and that was pretty impressive, so, this is going to help Mojave County as well, tax-wise. Okay, I took the liberty of asking IT to upload economic development video, which kind of shows this area to everybody. It's, it's probably nothing new, but I thought it's just a couple minutes long, if we could, if we could play that before, before we make a motion and a decision.
Mojave County Economic Development thanks you for your interest in I-40 Griffith Industrial Park. This strategic location satisfies many of the key criteria you may require, from Mojave County's low taxes and business startup costs, to cost-effective, transportation-rich access near major economic centers. Our team of local professionals are ready to help you make a seamless transition to the I-40 Industrial Park. Mojave County's Griffith Industrial Park is located along the I-40 Industrial Corridor, a 2,000-plus-or-minus-acre industrial area strategically located between Los Angeles, Phoenix, and Las Vegas, providing an affordable 21st-century solution to the decreasing availability of industrial lands. With an MX zone designation, the land allows for all type of businesses, including heavy manufacturing. The I-40 Griffith Industrial Park has fiber for data connectivity, along with electrical transport and distribution lines running throughout. Water lines and a high-pressure gas line are also built out in the area. Griffith Industrial Park is situated on the high-transportation corridors of Interstate 40 running east and west, and State Route 93, the future I-11 corridor running north and south. If rail access is required, the property is approximately 23 miles from Class 1 carrier BNSF. The Kingman Terminal Railroad operates over four-track miles in the Kingman Airport and Industrial Park, located five miles from Interstate 40 and Highway 93. In addition to interstate and rail access, the Griffith Industrial Park is approximately 23 miles from the Kingman Airport, 46 miles from the Waukun-Bullhead International Airport, and 113 miles from the Las Vegas-McCarren International Airport. Only 45 minutes from the California border, the I-40 Industrial Corridor is quickly becoming one of Northern Arizona's premier locations for, one, distribution, logistics, manufacturing, and support companies serving California markets or West Coast ports, and, two, those utilizing the Canemex Corridor running between Canada, the United States, and Mexico. Companies located at the Griffith Industrial Park are within a five-to-seven hour drive from Southern California. Existing companies currently located within the I-40 Industrial Corridor include Nucor Steel, McKee Foods, the Little Debbie brand, IWX Trucking, CTI Trucking, Griffith Power Plant, Black Mountain Generating Station, Mojave Block, and Praxair International. Although many are attracted to Mojave County for our warm climate and incredible scenic beauty, it's our business climate that has caught the attention of prospective employers. The benefits of locating your business in Mojave County include: low taxes and business costs, readily-available land, easy access to rail, air, and highway transportation for same-day access to California, Las Vegas, Phoenix, and Mexico, a loyal, dedicated, and hard-working workforce, affordable and abundant energy options, and community leaders that are ready to facilitate your build and move.
I don't know who they are.
In addition, the quality of life offered...
You need to fix that, Tammy.
...with the majestic Grand Canyon, the Hoover Dam, the mighty Colorado River, Lake Neade, Lake Havasu, historic Route 66, and the famous London Bridge are unmatched and will all be right outside your front door. We look forward to welcoming you as the newest member of our growing business community.
So, yeah, it's a very nice video, but you need to put us in that video instead of those, those nice-looking people, as Supervisor Angus pointed out. But you know what, this, this area of I-40 is a diamond in the rough, and Nevada has discovered us, and other companies are discovering us, and it's, it's just, it's just about to burst, and I think this, this small improvement is going to make such a world of difference for access to these businesses that are wanting to locate along Apache. So, with, with that, I'm going to make a motion as written, that we approve that Apache Road today.
Got a motion?
So, moved.
Okay, motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carried unanimously. And with that, I'll adjourn.
So, moved.